Okay, at six o'clock. We'll start with the pledge. Pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with a roll call.
Clark, Fish, Johnson, Jorgensen, Cole, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Here. Look for an approval of the agenda or comments.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from the November seventeenth and November twenty-one regular meetings and the briefing meeting, excuse me, the briefing meeting on the seventeenth, regular meeting on the twenty-first.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion carries. Approval of claims on page twenty-two and twenty-three. Got a chance to take a look at them?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion carries. We don't have any consent calendar? Visitors and time dightings then. This is an opportunity for anyone that's here that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda. If you're here to address an issue that is on the agenda, would make more sense for you to wait until that issue comes up. But if we have anybody that wants to address the council, you can sure do so at this time.
Hello, I'm Patrick Andrews. I'm the Development Director with the city, but I'm also the Secretary Treasurer for the Brandon Development Foundation. Right now, there's currently a sign-up period. The city, the Brandon Development Foundation, the Chamber, Sioux Valley Energy, and the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance are hosting a Small Business Basics seminar. Registration is currently open. It closes just before Christmas. It is scheduled to be starting in mid-January, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty on Tuesday mornings. If you have, if you have a small business, you are just starting one, you have an existing one, you just have an idea in your head that's kind of been rattling around for two years. You know, is this a good business idea? You don't have to have a, a physical business if you're just thinking about starting one or run one from your home and you'd be interested in learning about business plans and financing and networking and social media and all that kind of thing. It's, it's pretty cheap. SDSU puts it on, they find all sorts of speakers, so it is just a, an opportunity for the community. There are flyers in the back. If you're interested, you can email me directly and I could sign you up. So, if you're interested, it's, it's available now. So, I just wanted to.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Anybody else for anything that's not on the agenda, or even if it is, you can still speak to it? Seeing none, we'll move on. There is no public hearing on any new business, so we'll move to old business. And we'll start off with the second reading of ordinance six-sixty-five, the rezone of the properties at six-oh-four to six-twenty East Redwood. Opportunity for people to address that. I've asked Patrick to kind of bring everybody up to speed on what the process is, if the second reading passes, and I guess what it is if it doesn't pass, so.
Yep. So, again, I'm Patrick Andrews. I'm the Development Director for the city. I put together kind of a flow chart of the process generally, kind of where we are. So, anytime an application comes in for a rezone, this is kind of where the process goes. It's, it's a process that we have to go through, whether it makes sense or not. It's the process. So, it starts with the application. Anyone that owns land and wants to rezone it to something else submits an application. It goes to planning and zoning first. They hold a public hearing. You all probably experienced that as well, or at least remember it. If not, the YouTube video is available. At the end of that meeting, after hearing public comments, planning and zoning makes a recommendation. Whether they recommend yes or no, either way, it goes to the city council. And the last meeting was the first reading of the city council. From the city council can either say... Two meetings, yes. So, the city council can either say no, or can move on to the second reading. So, the second reading is currently where we are now. That's why on the chart it is in black. So, that's where we are. If they vote yes, it goes, since this particular issue also requires a conditional use permit, it would then proceed to planning and zoning. If they say no, that's the end. There's appeals and that kind of thing as well. But, so P and Z, should they say, should they say yes? P and Z, what their consideration here today is, does this property make sense for the list of uses in the R-three district? While it's nice to point to a particular use, you do run into situations, if you do rezone a property to that district, it opens up the list of the entirety of the permitted uses. So, that's part of the consideration in the rezone is, does, do all these uses make sense? Generally, a permitted use is a policy decision when we made the zoning ordinance that is, these uses generally fit this district. The conditional uses are, they probably fit, but we want to take a little bit of an extra look. So, should it go through today to P and Z, P and Z would take a more specific look at what pro, what use the developer, the owner of the project is looking at. So, in this case, it's kind of out there that they are looking at apartments. So, P and Z would look at that use specifically, and they have three options. They could either say, no, it doesn't work at all. They could say, yes, it works completely. Or they could say, yes, but we want conditions placed on this. And then they would come up with whatever conditions they feel are necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare. They would take public comments at this meeting, so you could provide input to help them come up with those conditions. So, should they say yes and approve a conditional use permit with or without conditions, that's still not the end of the line. Staff has all sorts of things we have to review. There's engineering design standards, there's planning, the whole zoning ordinance, there's all sorts of stuff we would need to look at. And sometimes, what they submit does not meet those, so that's kind of how it goes back and forth up to the staff review and plan, back and forth with the denied. We would work through that to come out with something that meets the design standards and everything else. And only after it does that could they actually pursue and get approved for a permit for it. So, there is quite a bit of process left in it. So, this is not the end of the line. So, there, there is a lot there. So, their consideration here is, do the list of uses in the R-three generally fit? So.
Okay, anybody have any questions? On the council? Okay, thank you, Patrick. We'll hear other comments.
I'm Bonnie Nelson, and as he said...
You gotta give her address.
Oh, our address? Oh, sixteen-twenty-four East Liberty Circle. And we are in, sort of in the back part of the neighborhood. And as I look at the map over here, the first map, it shows three sections in the nine-point some acres. The first, the section on the left is already zoned R-one. I don't know if you guys were all aware, anyone was aware of that. That has never been brought up in any of the ordinance request, any, it's never been mentioned anywhere that I could find. In the center, it's NRC. And then if you look on the, the right-hand side, that's also R-one. And those neighbors have built their houses around the fact that that's an R-one district. Those places have been R-one for probably twenty years. The only part that's not, that was not in the city is the very center. So, for us to say, yes, go ahead and change it to R-three, is not something that we are willing to want to do. If you look at, as Patrick said, once it's R-three, you vote on it tonight, you change it to R-three, it's R-three permanently. It's, it's done. Everything that's R-one now is gone. And anyone, let's say this development doesn't work, anyone can come in and put in some R-three apartments, because it's zoned that way. And that is, that is something that I don't want to see. And I don't believe anyone else wants that zoning changed from R-one to R-three.
The permitted, or the request itself also says that it's going from NRC to, the whole thing is going from NRC to R-three.
And it's not.
And that's incorrect. If, what I would request that you guys do is do a traffic study on Redwood Boulevard before you ever approve it to R-three, because I don't think you guys are gonna want to do this. It's, you guys also said at the last meeting we were at, that you have no plans to improve Redwood Boulevard. If you don't improve that road, you cannot do this, so.
It won't support.
It can't support what you, what they're doing. They're talking over two-hundred more vehicles going onto that road today. And it can't support that. I know that you guys defore, tried to force annex everything east of there. That isn't the right approach to improve Redwood in my book. I know he's, they, they, Brian said that they didn't want to do any roads in the city that don't have curb and gutter. That's not a road that really needs curb and gutter. It can be a rural paved road. And leave the residents alone out there. It's, nobody can afford what you guys tried to do last time. And it needs to be improved, so.
I'm Courtney Elk, and this is Zachary Elk. I am going to give him...
We're at seventeen-oh-four East Redwood Boulevard, the both of us.
And I'm going to give him my five minutes.
Um, there's not a lot that I can stand up here and say that you guys haven't heard. Unfortunately, there was nobody here for the last meeting to bring up any new topics. I think you heard plenty of safety concerns for the first meeting. Um, so, I think I'm just gonna kind of try to remind you of what you guys said. So, this is a little rough. It's hard to have a speech with just quotes, but these are from both you guys and comments from people who have been here before. So, in the planning and zoning meeting on ten-twenty, Mr. Charlie Bigelow, he was the only one that was here, he said, if this goes through, traffic is gonna be horrendous. It's gonna make the travel in the property, or it's gonna make the travel in there pretty darn difficult. Uh, Mr. Jorgensen replied, he said, if we rezone it to R-three, what they're allowed to build is thirty-six units. That's not true. If it's rezoned to R-three, it's a hundred and eight units, thirty-six per parcel. He then said, they would have to come back for a conditional use to build anything more than that. So, by rezoning it, we are allowing them to build thirty-six, but we're not allowing them to build two-hundred necessarily. Question for these people is whether or not they think this is appropriate for an R-three zone, which would be thirty-six units, which again is incorrect. Charlie then brought up the concern for the increasing traffic on Redwood Boulevard again. He said, with three-hundred people coming in, that means there's probably going to be more than three-hundred cars. The developer stated, it would actually be less than three-hundred cars, because children don't drive. Charles stated that people tend to own more than one vehicle. Tim then nodded his head and agreed, yes. And Mr. Jorgensen stated later in the meeting, we have a fairly significant drainage that runs through this property. During the meeting, there were zero safety issues that were brought up. The board asked the staff for information. On a couple different occasions, the only comment that they had was that there was no sewer that ran to the property. There were zero, zero safety concerns that were brought up during the planning and zoning meeting. On eleven-seventeen, the council meeting, Mr. Shelton said, there won't be any people backing up onto Redwood Boulevard, which I agree, that that's a tough deal. Again, that's incorrect, just because there's not people backing up for the apartments. You still have townhomes down the street where they back up every morning, throughout the day, every night. He said, we're all homeowners and don't want to see anything out of character or out of context on this lot or anything else that we develop. After the, after the community voiced their concerns about safety, Ms. Fish, uh, Miss, Mrs., Ms. Fish said, I'll have to concur, that I am concerned about the safety on the road. Folks, we don't have money to fix Redwood. This is the township road, and until we have the money, or the township steps up, that's the way it is. Folks, we didn't, folks didn't want to annex it in, didn't want to be annexed in, so that's the way it's going to be. So, let's assume that's the way it's going to be for a while. How is the safety going to be with this school out there and potential apartments? I think we should refer it back to the, for a traffic study to get a little more information in that area. Mr. Steen said, obviously, with this many people showing concern, I would be cautious moving forward on this until we see more of what it's going to look like. Like Barb said, the plans for expanding the road at Redwood, who knows what that's going to be? I'm concerned moving forward on this with the amount of concerns that we have with, with the people we are trying to protect here. Mr. Mayor then said, after a motion was made, he said, we have a motion and a second to table this project until we have more information. I listened to the audio from your guys' meeting prior to the last council meeting. There was no new information that was brought up. There was specifically, the question was asked whether or not there was a traffic study was done. The answer was no, there was not. Down here. Mr. Jorgensen then said, referencing, referencing the council's concerns, when it comes to the use of the property, when it comes to R-three, they can build thirty-six units there. Again, that's incorrect. Anything else that happens would have to go through conditional use hearing, and that is when everyone of those questions get answered. Before this mo, before this motion to table, what more information would you like? Ms. Clark said, I concur with the delay. I would have concerns with the one entrance and with the number of uni, with the number of the units that are going in there. I would also like to know how we are going to address the concerns that were brought up with the sewer and the traffic on Redwood. Again, there was no new information regarding a traffic study or sewer. Mr. Johnson then said, I guess my biggest concern would be traffic too. The school is going to happen, we know that. Traffic is going to increase, we know that. Mr. Shelton then said, if it's not viable, if the traffic study is not going to work, then we understand those things. And then the city council meeting on eleven-twenty-one, Mr., Mr. Cole said, we talked about doing a traffic study. I'd be interested in what that would be. Again, there was no traffic study. Mr. Steen then said, I'm not against this being R-three. What I am a little nervous about is the fact that if this goes through, we're talking about a hundred and eight units. I know they want to do two-hundred and some, but whatever financials take place, we are allowing, as a city council, we're allowing one-hundred and eight right now. My biggest concern would be the traffic count and the safety concerns that the neighbors are addressing. He mentioned that he's done appraising on that side of town. Appraising in that area, there are some concerns that I would have. I have no other concerns other than safety right now. So, having something to look at would make me feel a lot better for the residents that we also have to protect here. Personally, I would need to see a little more, I would need to see a little more to feel comfortable with just passing this along, without hearing more from the residents too in that area. Mr. Jorgensen then said, in regards to the parking, it's, it's referring to Redwood Boulevard, it's already wide enough to accommodate an arterial street. The only difference is that we allow no parking on both sides, like we do on Aspen and Holly and whatnot. If we just didn't allow parking on both sides, it would probably alleviate the problems. Unfortunately, there is allowed parking on that street. I don't know if, if you talked to the, the business owner for those townhomes, I'm sure he would disagree with just removing his parking. Tammy then said, the only thing, the only thing that would be required, the only thing would be if they require a turn lane or not. Tim's reply was, well, we don't have a turn lane on Aspen. And then Tammy replied, no, but there should be. Tim then said, but there isn't, and proceeded his argument on behalf of the apartments. So, that's, that's what I have for your, um, these are, again, things that you guys said. These are, these are all quotes. My wife right now, she's handing out pictures that, that I took. This was on Saturday. If I was smarter, I would have done it during a higher traffic time during, throughout the day. But I parked on the side of Redwood Boulevard, right by the townhomes. I sat there for about twenty minutes, and every single car that went by me looked just like those cars. I took a picture of every single vehicle. I didn't skip any. I didn't skim out the ones that didn't, because there was, there were no vehicles that did not cross the center line. So, after I sat there for like twenty minutes, there was then a time where two vehicles came in the opposite directions while I was sitting there, and both of them had to move over. And that's when I decided that I'm not gonna cause an accident, and I left, so. Outside of that, like I said, there's not much more that I can say that you guys haven't heard already. I don't know if Patrick would be allowed to come back up here to, to answer a question, but a question that I would have is that if you guys do pass this as an R-three, but conditional use does not allow them to do the full two-hundred and eight units, and they decide that it's not viable for them, can you give a list of things that would be allowed within an R-three zone? If not, these apartments? So, that's all I have.
If I can say one thing... If I could say one thing is just consider the fact, if you put these apartments up, there are gonna be children in there, and there's no sidewalk. I have kids. If they go on a, they go on a bus, they have to cross a busy street, and you're putting my kids at risk. So, consider that.
So, the permitted uses in the R-three district are multifamily dwellings. So, the, the heading for permitted uses, it reads, lots in the R-three district may be used for one of the following principal land uses. There's multifamily dwellings, nine to thirty-six dwelling units. Single-family attached dwellings, five to thirty-six dwelling units. Single-family attached, five to thirty-six dwelling units on individually platted lots surrounded by a commonly-owned space. House of worship, library, school, public park, neighborhood utility facility, homeowners' association maintenance building, and an electrical substation. The conditional use, conditional uses in the R-three, one of the following principal land uses may be allowed per lot after review and approval of conditional use permit by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those uses are multifamily dwellings, thirty-six or more dwelling units, office, group home, assisted living facility, nursing home, convent, monastery, or public utility facility.
Okay. Any other people like to speak to this issue? Would ask you to keep your comments to five minutes or less?
Sure. Jim Meyer, four-hundred North Riverwood Circle in Brandon. The only questions that I would have is, I'm not concerned about development as a whole, is the one entrance and exit for that many homes? The other issue that I would have is that if we're looking at two-hundred and four apartment units, if that's the case, external parking is, I think it was somewhere in the range of two-hundred and fifty units of parking, with no garages at all. So, what is the level of apartments that we want to put in this community if we're going to do them at the lowest common denominator? If we're going to have no garages and very limited access to that development area at all? So, those would really be the only concerns that I would have.
Great.
Hi there. I'm Shawna Murphy, nine-seventeen Freedom Circle. I just had several concerns and I guess several questions. I don't know if anyone's gonna be able to address those or how that works, but I was looking back, I watched the YouTube for that last meeting on November twenty-first, the meeting that nobody knew that our, this rezoning was put back on the table. So, that was really concerning. I don't even know how I found out about the meeting after it had happened, but I immediately went on to go look at the meeting minutes to see what happened at that meeting. The minutes were dated for November twenty-first, but the meetings that were shown were the meeting minutes from the previous meeting that I had attended. As of today, those meeting minutes have been updated. They're correct, but that was a little concerning for me. Right off the bat, I went to look up the meeting, meeting minutes. It said I was there on the twenty-first when I was not there, as well as a bunch of other, of my neighbors as well. Like Zach had mentioned in that meeting, you guys were stating that you were still looking for more information before you moved forward with the rezoning. I don't know, like you said, what information has been brought forward? The traffic study is, you know, the big thing, and Tammy was saying that doesn't need to be done until we get to the conditional use permit portion? So, I don't know, can anyone address, like, what info you guys were looking for, what additional info you needed before you approved the rezoning at the first reading? Okay. So, that's concerning to me. Well, I guess the traffic study is required for multifamily units over a hundred and fifty. I apologize, I don't think that had to do, well, it does have to do with the conditional use permitting at that point. So, the conditional use permit, it's my understanding that we would need, the developer would need to apply for that, because he would be exceeding the thirty-six units per, per parcel or per lot there. With the a hundred and five units, I mean, that's almost doubling the current ordinance of that thirty-six per parcel. In the meeting on the twenty-first, somebody mentioned that we would replat those three lots into one lot. So, it's my understanding that that one lot would only be allowed thirty-six units? And if the developer's applying for two-hundred and five units on one parcel, I mean, that's like six times the current ordinance if those lots were replatted? So, I guess I would just look for some clarification on that before we move forward with the rezoning? Let's see, the developer was here on the twenty-first and mentioned following Sioux Falls buffer yard requirements, and they wanted to do a fence instead of a berm. I would like to know what height fence he was wanting to put in, and what, with the buffer yard he was looking at putting in as well? He mentioned that he had a bunch of, quote, "a bunch of discussions with neighbors." I don't know anybody that has spoken directly with the developer, other than, that has gone to the meetings that they had at Gators last week, or at the Pizza Ranch a couple weeks before that. So, I'd be curious to know who they've talked to. He said, everybody at the Pizza Ranch, which was seven people, I think there was maybe even less concerned residents at that meeting. That was early November, I think. He said, everybody was happy and everybody was appeased. I don't think that was the case. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the meeting last week. I got two days' notice for that, with a letter in my mailbox. I don't know if anybody else got a notification any earlier than that, but with, you know, things were already on my schedule, so I was unable to attend that and voice some concerns and maybe get some more information from the developer at that meeting. Let's see, I would be curious about what the plan would be for the developer to do with that drainage easement? The drainage easement on, one of those three parcels I know is really, really big. So, I guess, yeah, I would just be curious about what the plan is for that, because it seems like it's there for a reason, with that drainage canal and all of that. It was also mentioned in that previous meeting that there are... It was also mentioned in that previous meeting that there aren't any R3-zoned areas in Brandon. I'm not sure if that is the case. So, I would be, again, curious to know. Is anyone able to tell me, I guess, offhand if there are R3-zoned areas in Brandon? Okay. I would think that there are. But, yeah, they mentioned that there weren't any besides this one.
She and I have five minutes, so if you could wrap it up.
Okay. And then I just wanted to point out, we realize that, like Patrick was saying, that there's a whole process to get that conditional use permit. But we, as residents, are just concerned that if it's rezoned, it's going to be really hard to... Our voices won't necessarily be heard because we've already passed that rezoning stage. And with the conditional use permit, I mean, as of now, there's no site plan that I know of, like an official site plan that's been submitted by the developer. And there's a high likelihood that Redwood would need to be, at least have 120-foot right-of-way. I don't know what it is now, but that seems significant. So, there would be a lot of work, and it would just help clarify things if we could have more, all the information on the table for all of our zoning and all of the plans for Redwood in the future and all that stuff. Because right now, I'm just... I just feel uncomfortable with just having that shoved in my backyard, essentially three-foot-tall buildings and just not having all of the information for that. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Riley Walls, 609 North Tamarack Avenue. So, as you can tell by my address, I don't necessarily live in this neighborhood. But I will tell you this, that I do understand what they are going through. I'm here to just show my support and show that I'm with these guys through and through. One thing that I agree with, complete with them, is that there has not been any sort of traffic study, and yet you guys have three different developments that are being rezoned within a mile of each other. If we don't look at Redwood or Split Rock, how you get onto I-90, there are currently only three exits coming in and out of Brandon. We need to be preparing. I understand for growth. I work in architecture. I understand this. Cities, in order to thrive, we need to grow. But also, in order to grow, we need to prepare. So, looking at the studies, looking at whether or not our utilities can support this, whether or not our water can support this, especially traffic. I mean, if anything, I know I'm from Rapid originally. There are developments out there that are absolutely horrid because nobody thought of traffic control. I'm sure if you're all, if any of you have been out there, Mount Rushmore, or not Mount Rushmore Road, but Rushmore Crossing, the big development as you come in, that whole strip mall, horrible. If you've ever gone through there, they've had to redo it, and now they're reconsidering how that entire thing operates. So, if we don't look at how we can expand our infrastructure before we start expanding our city, we're going to be in a world of hurt. So, I just urge you all to keep these things in consideration as we expand. Like I said, there are three developments all within walking distance of each other that are being rezoned. And that's going to just bring in a bunch of traffic. Thank you.
Marty Hoffman, 409 North Needles Drive. When I heard of this, I just thought, "How can they do this? We're going to have this big building, all these people moving in, and we have no room on this road for people to be going to and from and here and there, backing out of their driveways on the townhomes that are on Redwood Boulevard. How are we going to get onto Redwood Boulevard? There's only a light on Split Rock Boulevard." You know, how are these people going to get in and out? During the winter months, we're the last streets to be cleared. Also, the ground in that area, it all drains downward. Our basement shifts all the time. And we are even close to Redwood Boulevard. And if there's an easement there in the place you plan to put this apartment building in, how stable is that going to be? It scares me. You guys need to look at this a lot better than what you're doing. Thank you.
Steve Rubin, 512 North Oak Ridge, Brandon. I pretty much can't really say much more than what's already been said. But there's one thing that's bothered me a little bit, is we were here at a meeting when you guys tabled this thing. And on the assumption that was going to be a lot of work done and research, and Dana and Barb, Colin had some issues, Bruce had some issues. So, we pretty much put it on our back burner. The citizens were just like this. It was a full house. And Colin had a concern that, "Why is there so many here, but there wasn't anybody at the planning and zoning?" Good question. Why is everybody here tonight that wasn't here when you voted the first passing? Pizza Ranch, they're talking about that the developer got an email. I don't know if anybody here got an email from the city. I know you don't have to. It's not required. But we have a gentleman here that went out and got 150 signatures on a petition. That's concerned. I mean, I think everybody here is pretty concerned. I would think you guys should be concerned too. Hundred and fifty signatures in not one... Didn't tell them that we had, there was a meeting that was going to be back on the agenda. The developers knew. They were here. You guys must, I mean, it was empty except them. So, you talked about at the meeting about transparency and communication. I would like to see this council take the foot forward and try to figure out how something that we can be communicated, it's going to be a little bit better. I know, I realize you put it out at 4:30 on the agenda. We're supposed to read it to come to the Monday council meeting. All right. If you're gone over the weekend, we don't know. You know, we don't pick it up. Maybe you don't have internet. But there's got to be a better way. And what it is, I mean, we're all, you guys are smart people. That's why you're here. Let's come up with a solution. Let's not give one party the advantage to come to get their case, and you guys voted, and then it passes, and then we have to come back. Everybody's got, probably want to watch Monday Night Football. I don't know. But let's come up with something that's a little better so we don't have to come in here and voice our concerns. You guys, let's do a good job for us. We're all here because we care about Brandon. We have one high school. We're all links. As far as I'm concerned, we're all under one roof. We should, we're all the same. And let's start doing that. We can do it. You guys are smart people. Let's just communicate with us a little better. That's all I have. And thank you for, everybody, for coming. This is a concern for a lot of folks. Thank you.
Ben Soul, 721 South Fourth. I have a little bit different perspective on this. Having seen a couple of the projects try to go through on Redwood, I think the planning and zoning does a really good job in the city, recommending what would fit good in the city. And I think despite that, we aren't getting the building that we should have in a town that needs to grow. And that's evidenced by comparable of Harrisburg being two-thirds the size, but every year having double the building permits that Brandon has. I think we need to open it up to get more development in Brandon, and I think this is a good opportunity. As far as the concerns on Redwood, it's an arterial street. There are geographical constraints. The river, where you can't get east. It's one of two roads across the river. It's always going to be a busy road. We're building a school out there, and that is always going to be an access point across the river. The road will grow as the population grows. I know that we'll work on that, just like we have in the core with the sidewalks being added in. I guess, I think we need to... It's hard to look at the whole picture of the city, not just the surrounding neighbors. And I know that's tough. No one ever wants an apartment next to them. But I think in this case, it's probably what's best for the city to keep it going. Thanks.
Anyone else want to address this issue?
Hi, Haley Park. I live at 101 East Conifer. So, I actually don't live in this area, but I'm just here to also help support all of the concern that's here. And if I could just take a moment, by a show of hands, if you could, how many are here for this reason? So, I would just encourage you that all of you have been elected to represent us as citizens, and we've given you the responsibility to really think of us and put us first. And that's why you're here, to help make these hard decisions. And that's why you're here. And I don't think anybody is against growth and development because that's truly how you improve as a city and grow. But I encourage you to please think about this responsibly because that's why you've been elected. And there's obvious concern here. And do the right thing. Be responsible. If there is a shadow of a doubt, you don't pass something that you don't know with a certainty that you have a plan and a way forward. So, if you, you know, if you feel like you can vote something you have no shadow of a doubt, great. I want you to have that conviction. But shame on you if you vote on something that you don't understand. That's all.
How you guys doing? My name is Bryce Jones. I live at 812 North Snowberry Circle. My backyard faces Redwood to the far, be the far west property. I coach league football. I got five kids. I watch kids cross Redwood Boulevard either to my house or going into those neighborhoods to the, to the south of us every day. And that's one thing I want you guys to think about is those neighborhoods are set up with families and kids that cross and go to the gas station and walk to McDonald's and walk home from high school and walk home from the middle schools. And by putting two cars on the side of those roads and jamming in an apartment complex, it's going to cause a real issue for a lot of kids in that area. The great thing about our communities and our areas is our neighborhoods were set up for the right reasons, and they were zoned for the right reasons. And I think people before us saw that and saw where we were going and how our neighborhoods were built. And we've all been there for a long time and live in those neighborhoods for that reason because they're safe and they're a good place to raise families. And I'm not against development. I think development's great. But by trying to put something in there where it puts a lot of our children at risk that are walking to and from home and to friends' house, I think it's something you guys need to think about. So, thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Oh, Daniel Edmonds, 1521 Keystone Drive. Before Mr. Mayor was Mr. Mayor, he's actually the one that took me to the house that I'm at. So, thank you for that. So, enjoy the area. Enjoy the community. Moved here a few years ago, about five years ago. Moved up from Knoxville, Tennessee. It's about a half a million people in that area. So, I'm big on growth, as some have said here. But I will tell you some of the things that have happened of misfortune and misplanning is they will build communities, they will build homes, they will build others after the fact. Then they think, "Where should the school go? Where should the police department go? Where should this be?" It's all after the fact instead of planning ahead of time. So, others have mentioned something along the lines. I would like to also think about water because from what I've understood, that's kind of an issue. And how much do we have? And knowing that we have constraints there on how much we could do, how much more can we sustain that part? I hadn't even thought about the roads, even though I drive on that road every day. Duh, on my part. So, yeah, traffic would be horrific. So, those are my concerns. Is, as you're talking about safety, you know, we have enough water to be able to sustain the communities and what we're doing forward if we're having to already ration what we're doing? And we put a bigger constraint on that, will rationing be enough at some point? What happens if we really do have a dry spell? What more water are we going to get? And we have more pull off of fewer resources, we will be in a difficult situation. So, I appreciate your time and thank you.
Hello, I'm Dustin Hendrickson from Brookings, South Dakota. And I thank you guys for the opportunity to be here. I'm not, I know that I'm the least popular person in this room right now. So, this is not very, this is not fun to be in this position. But I am grateful for this opportunity, and I'd love to earn you guys' trust. We did do a trip generation memo, which is the first part of a traffic study. And so, we have a study. Basically, we're ready to order that as soon as the process allows. And we just wanted to let you know that we've been following all the processes that the city has in place. And we all... Sorry, I'm trying to talk back to you guys. I'll talk into the mic. So, we did a trip generation memo. And this shows how, this is the first part of the traffic study. And it shows how much traffic's going to be generated here compared to like an R1 if they did a 25-home R1 neighborhood in here. Anyways, this is the first part of the traffic study. And we have a traffic study ready to get ordered as soon as the process is in place. And we are following the city's processes. Well, we hope to follow them as good as we can. And we try to bring in professionals anytime we can. We bring in the engineers and the architects and the different things. And so, it's a huge process that we go through. And it's not like this is something that's really easy for anyone to get completely 100% correct on the first time. And that's why you guys have these processes. And we work through these, and we end up with a very good product because of everyone's input into it. And growing is always tough. But a project of this magnitude gets the most professionals to work on it. So, we handle all these concerns that everybody does have. And there's a process that usually a professional is the one working on through all these processes. So, there's many, many people involved. Hundreds of people will be involved in this project. But this traffic study says that the total daily trips from an R1 neighborhood would be 236. And the total daily trips of this neighborhood that we're proposing would be 376. So, it's about 140 more trips. So, this is what, this is from Infrastructure Design Group, and they do traffic studies. And I believe they would be working with Tammy directly on the traffic study when it got ordered. And then we also submitted to you guys the updated site plan, which shows all the input that we took in from the neighbors. And we moved the buildings as far away from the lot lines as possible. On the north side, we're about 120 feet roughly. And on the west side, we're about 50 feet. And we, there's plans to do lots of trees. There's lots of berms planned, especially on the north side. There's berms planned. There will be pine trees planted so they could fill in for, in the winter months when the other trees lose their leaves. So, we're going to take a lot of care to protect the neighbors. And then whatever traffic studies, if the traffic study says the road's no good and, you know, that, then that would be another roadblock that we would come on to at that time. I mean, you guys wouldn't be able to move forward without the traffic study okaying it as well. But I guess that's all I have. But thank you very much for your time, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity. And this, because you guys packed this place, this is one of the reasons that we want to build here because we know this is a high-quality town. So, we want to add to what you guys have. And I think once this project was done, you guys would be kind of proud of what was there. It'll be a very nice-looking project. It's not, it's not a cheap project. There's a lot of time and attention paid to the design, and a lot of time goes into the detail. So, thank you very much.
Hello. My name's Caleb Veldhouse. I'm from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I am Dustin's partner on this deal. So, I didn't think it was fair for him to be the most hated person in the room without somebody by his side. We've heard a lot of concerns today, and we've heard a lot of issues. And, you know, that's good. That's good communication. I just wanted to also, you know, represent to the city council and the Planning and Zoning Commission that we have taken the steps to take two neighborhood meetings, send out letters. And we do apologize for the most, you know, the short timeframe from the last letter to this meeting. But we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity for discussion before this. And we continue to take those into consideration as we do the planning. But what I would urge you during this time is all of these concerns, all of these issues are valid. But not necessarily all of them are exactly pertinent to today's question. And today's question is, is the rezoning to R3 good for the city of Brandon in this location? Has it followed the policies and procedures? Do you agree with the planning and zoning? Do you agree with the planning and zoning's recommendation to move it to R3? And those are really the three questions at, at stake today. And I would just ask you and urge you to stay focused on the question, not necessarily all the CUP dialogue that can happen over time. But is this the right move for Brandon? That's up to you to decide based on their input and our representations and what we would like to do here and be part of the community. So, we thank you for your time. We thank you for everybody showing up. We understand your concerns and we're trying to do our best for the city of Brandon as well. Thank you.
Caleb? I've got, I've got one question that I'd like to ask. And that is, you know, we're talking about having the project on one parcel. At what point we're in the process, would you be replating that into one parcel as opposed to three?
Well, I would say it's going to depend on a lot about today's answer. I think it, I mean, it's hard to answer that question without knowing exactly what's going to happen today. But I would say that it would be part of the process during the CUP because that that would take place on exactly how this was going to get parceled out.
So, if, if it was passed today, would you look at replating prior to the conditional use permit process or?
I would say yes, but I also think it should be a conversation that's during the CUP process on how exactly the city would like us to go forward with that.
They would be required to replant it before they'd ever have a building permit. So, it'd be part of the process, the review process.
And that's typically how we would do it. It's got to get platted into its final, final lot lines before you're going to get a building permit. So, you have setbacks, et cetera, and all that you're going to put into place. And probably additional setbacks and buffer yard requirements if it gets to the CUP portion of the project.
Okay. Other comments?
Good evening. I'm David Shelton, represent the owner of the property on Redwood. Just wanted to, just voice my appreciation of where we're at to date and meeting with the neighbors, have a great, great affection for the neighborhood and for the city. And even got a phone call after our last meeting that just, from someone who was opposed initially, who said that they are, based on what they heard, that they're, they're for this project. And so, that was an interesting unprovoked phone call. But so, it's not, obviously not the sentiment of everyone here. But I think a lot of what's happening here is that they don't realize what's being built. They just think it's like one of these big monster apartment buildings. And it's not the case at all. There's a lot of careful planning that's gone into so far. This is really just at its, the development is at, at its very preliminary stage. That when, once second reading is done and we know that we have the rezoning, then the, then the real work begins and, and spending significant dollars for consultants to prove up the property and, and the, and the traffic and everything else. So, just wanted to just come and voice the ownership's request before the council and also to let the people in the, in the galley know also that we're, we, we here and, and we're, we're taking the necessary steps to do the right thing as property owners here in Brandon. So, thank you.
Other comments?
Can you readdress after you've been up there? I didn't use my five minutes.
Yes. But you've already used three minutes.
Right. Steve Rubin, 512 North Oak Ridge. Planning and zoning, I went back and watched it. Did not ask one safety question to the citizens of Brandon. It did pass, but there was not one question regarding Redwood Boulevard, the duplexes, the drainage ditch, the floods, none. Planning and zoning did not ask, and it did, it did give a due pass with not one safety question. So, I heard that the planning and zoning did pass that, which they did. But I'm not so sure they had all the information or they didn't do their job getting the information like these folks have. So, I wanted to pass that. Thank you.
I'll make this quick as well just because I have a little bit of insight into this as well, just from previous experience on Pasco Flower. City council made the decision to, go ahead. Oh, yep.
Name?
Name, 609 North Tammerick Avenue, Riley Walls. Yep. So, on, or abutting my property is another property that was in question. Similar thing came through. They were trying to change it to an R3. City council denied it. I'd like to take note that almost everything that's gone through- Yeah. Just scoot this closer. Anything that's gone through planning and zoning has been approved. It's always the city that has kind of stopped it in terms of rezoning. So, on that particular case, normally whenever you're looking at cities, R3s aren't necessarily abutting R1s, they're usually cushioned by R2s. So, that is a good reasoning in which why you shouldn't have something like that next to, an R3 next to an R1 is because there's no cushioning. If they were to plan for this to be an R3, then there should have been cushioning in, like, in hindsight. I guess not in hindsight, but in planning. So, looking at that, I just would like to say that you guys, I would like to say I appreciate what you guys do because a lot of the times it does take city council to actually listen to the people. So, thank you.
Melissa Oliver, 1508 East Birch Street. I, I would just like to point out when he said, "We don't understand." We only know as much as they are telling us. So, we, I've been at the meeting. I feel like I'm as informed as they allowed us to be. I have significant safety concerns. This will be my neighbor. I have significant safety concerns. I have three kids. I have a dog. I mean, my kids, we invest in Brandon. And I feel like we lost a lot of trust in our city council after going behind our back and doing what you did. But I feel like this is an opportunity to listen to us, to listen to our concerns for not only here and now, but the future. I'm not opposed to that being developed at all. I do think 205 units with 250 parking spaces is unrealistic. But I really think that development is important. I just don't know that that's the appropriate spot for an apartment complex of that size with no intentions of improvement to Split Rock Boulevard. Thank you.
Hi, Shawna Murphy, 917 North Freedom Circle. Similar to what she was saying, I do want to address that, I guess I can't speak for everyone, but most of us do know that these buildings are supposed to be elegant and nice and it's going to bring in good people and we're aware of that. I don't think that we're necessarily opposed to development, but we're opposed to the high-density residential, the R3. The R1, it's already zoned for, we would be open to that. R2, that's the whole point of a zoning ordinance is to buffer between R1 and R3 to have R2 in there. And there is R2, you know, next to those parcels on Redwood. So, like, you have the R1 neighborhood and then you have those R2 condos. But that R3 is still abutting up against R1 if this goes through. I also wanted to address the children. I remember at one of the meetings with the developers, and I don't know if they can address this, but they said that children, these units were meant for people without children, so there weren't going to be children allowed in these units.
There won't be that many children, probably one child per floor.
Okay.
Let me have your attention. Speaker, if somebody wants to speak at the mic, that's okay.
So, thank you for that. Yeah, I just want a clarification because like Zach said at a previous city council meeting, it was mentioned that children can't drive, so there won't be a lot of traffic on Redwood, which insinuates that children would be living there. So, um-
Yeah, I think you've had your time.
Yep. Thank you. That's all I needed. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing done, we'll move on and discussion on the part of the council on this issue.
I'll get us going. You know, first off, thank you. This is, this is amazing. I, I guess I can't speak for the, all other council members, but from my standpoint, I feel like we, we owe you an apology. What happened, in my opinion, what happened at the last meeting because it was tabled, I think others maybe thought the similar thing of why weren't, why weren't, why weren't more people here? Why weren't more people here? And unfortunately, we did talk about it. It's on the agenda and it got brought up and it was, and it was passed. But I'm thankful we have another second reading and now you, your voices have, hopefully have been heard by us. Since the, let's see, we, we tabled this thing on November 7th. I haven't seen any other information that has caused me to think there's no, the, safety is not a, a concern that we have out there right now. And in fact, since that November 7th meeting, we first initially talked about 36 units. Well, we come to find out what their, with the, how we have to look at this, kind of like Caleb had mentioned earlier. Alls we're looking at tonight is, for us as a city council, are we okay with 108 units out there? Because this could go to, back to conditional, conditional use and, and back to P and Z and it could fail. And all of a sudden, we do have 108 units out there that anybody could come in and build that, that, so we got to be ready to be okay with that. And if we're okay with that, then that's, then we're okay with that. I personally am not, not okay with it as of now. I would like to see again, if we can get, you know, these, we're, we're almost already there. We're, we're, the developers already started working on the traffic study. I would like to see some numbers before. I'm okay pushing forward on this.
Other discussion?
I'll kind of echo what Colin is, is saying. And I too apologize for what happened at the last meeting. I felt it was definitely not appropriate and not a way for us to gain our community's trust. Definitely not transparency. So, I will also apologize for that. You know, history has, has shown us that we don't learn about our planning mistakes until years later. And I do feel like we're putting the cart before the horse and jumping into this without having information. You know, it was mentioned, if you have a shadow of a doubt, I do have a shadow of a doubt. Not opposed, I definitely think we need to develop and grow, but we need to do it methodically and we need to do it precisely. And we need to have information to do that. So, I, I do feel like this has been rushed. I have, infrastructure is brought up. I really struggle building now and worrying about infrastructure later. And Redwood is a big thing to overcome. And I, I feel like that has to be figured out before we do much else in that area. We're potentially talking about an apartment complex over by the new school here on Redwood. Hag's putting one up west. I mean, we're, we're talking about a pretty big growth for it if all of this happens. And I think that we need to take pause and consider how that affects the big picture and not just, will this work in this piece of property right this minute? So, for me, I, I agree, we have to be prepared for worst-case scenario. And I'm not at a point to say that I'm prepared for that worst-case scenario of 108, which is, is what it would be. Or to put R3 between two R1s. So, I'm with Colin.
Any other discussion on the part of the council?
I have a question. If it, if it does not pass tonight, when can it be brought up again? What would be the process for reapplication? Six months?
If the second reading doesn't pass, the ordinance fails. Any property owner can then resubmit a petition or application for a rezone again. There's no delay.
Can you speak up like you?
They can, if, if the second reading is not passed tonight, the ordinance fails. The, any property owner that can then submit an application for a rezone at any time, there's no delay. And then the process would start all over again.
Is it correct that two of those parcels are R1 and the third one is NRC? Is that correct?
And apologize, being the newbie on, on the council. Are we able to, being this is the second reading, can we amend the reading to say, you know, hey, we want to, again, maybe table this barring, you know, getting more research and we're actually able to, to, to see some things that would make us feel better about moving forward with 108 units?
You don't have to make a decision tonight. You can table it again if you want. There's nothing to say you can't table.
Question for Tammy. We have had previous traffic studies on Redwood, have we not?
Traffic studies, maybe not, but we do have traffic counts.
Traffic counts.
We have our own traffic counters.
Okay. Do you have any of that information now or?
Yep.
And, and does that, is that going to break it down by hour of the day? Is it that specific or is it just straight numbers?
It is that. We do have that detail, but I don't have that in front of me. What I do have is the GIS map that we have created that is on the city's website. And we put the traffic count information on there. So, on Redwood, the annual average daily traffic is at that about 700 mark? 700 on the paved section. If you go over to the gravel, it is about 350.
Sorry, can we back there when the school's going to be there in the future too then? That would be another factor to add to the traffic on that road.
So, that would be part of an official traffic study. They would look at projections. We don't have that.
But it's, it's not impossible, it's not impossible for us to have a traffic study before a rezone, correct? Because I believe our city engineer had recommended a traffic study. I mean, it doesn't have to happen after a rezone, correct?
Correct.
Other discussion on the part of the council?
All right. So, I've been involved with planning and zoning for probably close to 15 years. I can remember a room filled exactly like this. People I knew, people who looked at me and said, "You're destroying our neighborhood." There was an R1 zone that a developer wanted to go general business. The exact same arguments were made tonight. Planning and zoning commission decided to rezone it to general business. The city council upheld it. And now you buy coffee there, you go to pharmacy there, you have fastenalls there. The argument that it destroys property value hasn't come true. The traffic through the neighborhood has not come true. We do have historical data, Dana. We have that development we can look at. The planning and zoning has made lots of rezones. It's done conditional uses. It's done variances over the time that I've been involved with it. I watched this city council spend $300,000 building a utility building into the golf course parking lot, extra tax dollars by the way, and put shut-offs in a ditch 20 feet down. So, if the public works ever have to access it, they're in trouble. So, you know, to sit and beg on planning and zoning doesn't sit well with me when I've watched the city council make giant mistakes. It's also become very evident to me over the last couple of years that every single time somebody wants to do something with a parcel of land in this town, the only thing we're allowed to build is single-family homes. If we don't, the room fills up and we hear the exact same thing. Kids are going to die. Property values are going to get trashed. traffic is going to be terrible, on and on and on. Well, I also understand that not everybody wants to live in a single-family home. Believe it or not, there's a lot of very high-earning individuals that would like to run an apartment. This, this misperception that if you build apartments, it's going to be full of crime and, and underprivileged people, and on and on. It's a load of bull. There is a necessity to have housing that doesn't look like a single-family house, because there are people who want to live in it. And if your town doesn't allow, and your city doesn't allow for that kind of growth and development, especially R3, if it doesn't allow for general business, if it doesn't allow for commerce, sooner or later, what will happen is every developer who's looking at Brandon will just stop. I'm, I'm well aware of that. So, I don't know what more information you guys would like. Go seek it, table it, do whatever you want. I do have some historical knowledge that this does not scare me, and I am 100%.
No, no. No, I think, real, real quick, Tim, I mean, it's commendable, obviously, what Tim has done on P and Z, and everybody on P and Z, and by no means am I, and again, I'm not speaking for everybody up here, am I attacking P and Z for what they're doing. But there is checks and balances in, in all this. From, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think when, when P and Z voted on this, their assumption was 36 units. And when we first tabled that on November 7th, we were all thinking 36 units. Well, it's not 36 units, it's 108, 108 units. I'm not opposed to this development. What I am nervous about is the, the safety issues that everybody has brought up. And for us to just, in my opinion, for us to just push this forward without, hey, let's just take a breather, let's get all the information we need, and the information, Tim, that I would like to see, again, is the, is, is the safety, is the traffic. It would make me feel better, I think it would make, obviously, these residents feel better. And again, you, you and everybody on P and Z work your tails off. And this is not a personal attack on you or anybody. What it is for me, and just now, I'm speaking for myself, what it is for me is that I would feel better voting on this if I had everything that I could look for. And I know that when I step off this board years, years down the road, that, hey, at least I made a decision with all, with all, with all the knowledge I have.
Any other discussion on the part of the council? Any other discussion on the part of the council? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the second reading.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second to deny the second reading of this ordinance. Any further discussion on the part of the council? Hearing done. We'll do a roll call.
Clark?
Hi.
Fish?
Johnson?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Steen?
Aye.
Board of two mayor.
So the motion carries.
Correct.
Motion carries. We'll move on. We have, we have second reading of, of the,
Or it's 674.
674. To,
To rezonate a small portion of Brandon 90 Plaza.
Correct.
I remind you that we are still in the meeting, so I ask you if you're going to leave, leave quietly.
So the portion that's being rezoned is that, if you look on page 48, that's small hash marked area.
Go ahead.
Uh, any questions?
Name your name and address.
Oh, yeah, 7321 West 65th Street, Mr. Paul. And the reason for the rezonation, we want to echo, no matter what goes in there. Because we're going to have bike lanes around the bike lanes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Move to approve.
Pardon?
Move to approve. One second.
Speak into the microphone.
Motion and second to approve. Any further discussion on the part of the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. It's all good out there, we're playing our cards right?
Committee reports, golf course.
No business.
Parks and Rec. We've got the park report on page 55. Tennis court lights are going to be on the agenda until spring, I think.
Yep.
And we've got a purchase of some mowers for the Parks and Rec.
Correct. Parks Department has submitted a request to purchase two, two 20, two 2022 Ferris mowers for $37,800 with a trade value of 13.3.
I'll look for a motion.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. All, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Public safety. Got the police report on page 58 to 60. Inspection report, 61 and 62, 47 new homes built so far this year. We've got the fire department report on page 63. And we have a new hire officer.
Correct. There's new police officer authorized for fiscal year 2023. Interviewing committee is recommending that we hire or make the offer to Dakari Jennings.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the new hire. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Administration, we've got the communication report on page 65. We've got garbage hauler's license on page 66. We'll need a motion on that.
Correct.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the garbage hauler's license. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Sewer cleaning licenses on page 67. We'll need a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Motion and second to approve the sewer cleaning licenses. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We've got some changes in the employment policy manual that we discussed on Thursday on page 68 to 73. We'll need a motion on that.
No, no action at this point in time, we'll submit it at the next council meeting. This is just for information, if you have any questions or concerns, so for you to review and consider.
All right.
Can we just make, can we make a comment now if we have a question on something? So I just, Barb asked about this briefing, the 5.3.8, employees refrain from initiating work. I would just like us to work on that wording, and I don't have much more advice. But I, I don't want an employee to feel like they're going to be in trouble if they do something during their time off. And I thought of several scenarios through my head where somebody could need to do something during their time off. And different employees are at different levels of dedication, I get that, but especially for like department heads and salaried people, I just, I would hate for them to feel like they couldn't do something, or they're going to get in trouble for stepping up and doing something. So, I don't know if there's a different way to word it, but that, that one bothers me.
I can say something to that effect. The word is encourage, it's not mandating. And I guess when I read it, I don't see, I, I don't see where it doesn't give latitude. New section encouraging, it doesn't say new section forbidding.
Employees should refrain from initiating work activities during periods of approved time off, including, but not limited to, email, phone communications, and meeting attendance.
You know, you could just say employees are encouraged to not initiate work activities. You could say absent special circumstances, employees should refrain or encourage not to.
I would like that better.
There's, there's a range behind that.
Yeah, there you go.
And then I'm also one that also looks at should, is more of a suggestion than shall. You know, so it does give latitude.
Should, I mean, should, right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Staff going to take, take that into consideration? We have a resolution 39-22 with home occupation application fees. Page 74 and 75, we'll need a motion on that?
So move. Second.
Motion and second to approve resolution 39-22. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Subrecipient agreement between the CCOG and the City of Brandon. We discussed this a little bit at our briefing meeting on page, several pages, 76 to 113. We'll need a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Cannabis renewals, page 114.
Move to approve.
Motion and second to approve the cannabis renewals. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Streets, you got the work report on page 115. And we have the 2023 concrete and asphalt repair project bids. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the concrete and asphalt repair project bids. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Water and sewer department, West Side Sanitary Sewer Project, we've got a change order page 118 to 120. We'll need a motion on that?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the change order. Change order number one. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. The certificate of substantial completion on page 121 and 124, is that a motion issue?
Correct.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the certificate of substantial completion. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item C, engineer's statement of final completion and owner's acceptance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Pay application number seven. The final one. Page 127 to 130. We'll need a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion and second to approve the pay application number seven. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Water tower project. We discussed this at the briefing meeting, change order number one, or excuse me, change order number four. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve change order number four. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Change order number five, 134 to 141. Look for a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve change order number five. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Water treatment plant project pay application, number one.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the water treatment plant pay application. Any further discussion on that? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We don't have any other new business. Do we have any need for an executive session?
No, sir.
I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Not when you have that. It was a little difficult, wasn't it?